Call the city commission meeting to order. The record reflect that all city commissioners are present. City staff excluding city manager, who is on vacation, are present. First item on the agenda, Mayor and City Commission reports. This is an opportunity for the mayor and city commissioners to make comments and reports to the public for public good and information. The following is general information for the month of November for the community. Our monthly local retail sales tax receipts for November 2016 were $385,828.2, a decrease of $2,600 over the year prior. Overall, we are up .35% from 2015. The city share from the countywide sales tax was $190,835.7, a decrease of $3,600. And overall, we're seeing a decrease of .64% from the year of 2015. In November, we issued 41 building permits, with the total value of those building permits being $632,582. And the Flint Hills Mall CID collected $20,620 in November, and year-to-date total of $88,688. Are there any other items for the commission to share for the good communities? Seeing none, move on to the consent agenda. The items listed on the consent agenda are considered by the governing body to be routine business items. Approval of these items may be made by a single motion, second, and majority vote, with no separate discussion of any item listed. Should a member of the governing body desire to discuss any item at his or her request, it will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Four items, the minutes the regular meeting held December 7th, ratification of payroll ordinance for the period ending December 9th, approval of the November budget, and setting bid date and time to receive bids for a new roll-off container truck. It's a pleasure with the commission.
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Moving second to accept and approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign. Motion passes. Next up is public comment. And first, we're going to recognize the members of our City Employees Collaborate, Organize, Engage Program. The COE Collaborate, Organize, Engage is an internal training program which is attempting to provide a better understanding of the city operations, processes, and decision-making. The group has met eight times in the past four months, and December 7th was their last meeting. And tonight, we had them at dinner. A total of 10 members completed this year's class, and at this point in time, we'd like to present them with certificates of completion. So we'll announce all our names. A few of them won't be here. Jesse Taylor from the Emporia Fire Department is on duty tonight, so he's there. Next up completing the class, Tina Weeks. Tina, congratulations. Thank you very much. Sandra Short. Sandra, congratulations. Thank you very much. Todd Smith. He's not. Okay, he's upstairs. Brenda Reynosa. Brenda, congratulations. Thank you. Kevin Rinsley is also on duty tonight with the police department, so we'll get that to him later. Jeff Meek. Jeff, thank you very much. Congratulations. For everybody that needs to know, Jeff's one of the individuals that gets up 34 times a year, plus or minus 80 times, to put those banners up downtown when they change. So he's up and down a lot downtown making sure all our banners are up in the crew.
Awesome job.
Next up, Scott Price, Police Department IT. Scott. Lori Andrews. Now is it? Thank you, Lori. And last, Joe Foster from Plan Zoning. Joe, congratulations. Thank you very much. All right. Are there any other public comments to come before the city commission that aren't on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next is consider approval of maintenance contract with the Emporia Public Library for 2017.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is our standard contract. It's been revised in terms of financial matters, 2% increase. We do provide all the maintenance services over there. We assign a staff member from our civic auditorium crew, who also helps out on major events, et cetera. We recommend approval of this agreement as written, fairly clear and straightforward.
Do we adopt the maintenance contract for 2017?
Second.
So moving second that we adopt the maintenance agreement with the Emporia Public Library for 2017. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All pose same sign. Motion passes. Next up is consider approval of purchase of new ambulances.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We present to you tonight an ambulance by contract based on the Houston-Galveston area Council of Governments. That's what HGAC stands for. We bought things off their contracts before. This is somewhat a unique situation. We have funds allocated in our 2016 budget as well as 17, and we were able to negotiate to freeze that price till we can get our purchase order in 17. Tonight's action would be to approve the purchase of, but we would not issue a purchase order and enter into contract on the 17 one until January 1st, but the price would be the same, et cetera. I think you'll note the write-up, we're saving about $17,000 per truck by doing this. Excuse me. $78.76 per truck by doing this. So that's the scoop. Any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
The equipment for the third truck, does that go in 17's budget as well?
Yeah, it will be.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about that this year.
I move that we approve the purchase of the ambulance.
Contract. Moving second to approve the ambulance contract for purchase of the 2016 ambulance and budget freeze purchase 2017 ambulance as well. Is there any further discussion? I'll say real quick, thanks for looking at these opportunities when we know we've got to make some major purchases like this, and we're looking at, you know, a combined savings of almost $35,000 between the two vehicles. It's, you know, it's a pretty, that's a pretty significant cost savings and two pieces of equipment that we need to upgrade. Well, a new one to add to our fleet as we, as we grow the services, our service offices. So I'm glad that we're able to find this opportunity to make those savings.
We appreciate your support.
Further comments? Seeing none? We'll vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Next up is consider of a resolution for housing development by Wright Development.
Mayor and Commissioners, this resolution was passed by this body last year in support of this development. At that time, the company was Woodco. Basically, it is the same company Wright Development is now that the name being used for this particular development. Dolph Woodman from Wright Development is here tonight to answer any questions. We had a substantial amount of backup that was in your packet. He has also brought some backup that basically mirrors that, but with the addition of two additional maps, vocational maps that are in there. One of them shows it's in the neighborhood revitalization area. Read the write-up. We've got the 24-plex, one small-plex, clubhouse and playground, Iver Durant's 465 to 585, two-bedroom, and 570, 700 for the three-bedroom. Any questions? I'm sure Mr. Woodman would be happy to answer them, or will answer anything he can. This has gone before us in this resolution form. It also went as a two-year site to the planning commission, which approved rezoning. So this has been through the process a couple times.
Resolution number 3593.
Move to approve Resolution 3593 as presented.
Second.
It's moving second to approve Resolution 3593, supporting application for housing tax credit in the city of Emporia. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Next up is public hearing for the wastewater treatment plant improvements.
I heard the legislation changed. We don't have to do this anymore.
Are they just writing free checks now, or is that how it works?
Yeah.
I wish. Frank Abart with the Public Works Department introducing the topic here. Essentially, this is a wastewater treatment plant improvement, and this requirement is actually stemming from the state revolving fund, which is where we're going to get our funding to make that improvement and meet our permitting requirements. What I want to do is just give John Mitchell with Burns &amp; Mack, Burns &amp; McDonald, the intro here. He's going to do a quick briefing, and then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing and go from there. And yes, I know you've seen this many times, but yeah, it hasn't changed.
We're starting to get the feeling that maybe you're going to put us on the work crew or something. You guys have seen this already.
It's probably time for, it's time for a quiz, maybe.
Price was supposed to go down each time you. That did not happen.
This is John Mitchell, Burns &amp; McDonald, part of our design team.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Frank said, I'm John Mitchell with Burns &amp; McDonald, and I was invited here to facilitate the public hearing for the wastewater treatment plant improvements. The public hearing does a number of things. It provides an opportunity to discuss the need for the project. It provides an opportunity to discuss what alternatives were considered for the project. It provides an opportunity to discuss financing mechanisms for the project, and an opportunity to provide discussion on the anticipated project schedule. It also, as Frank mentioned, is a mandatory component of the SRF application process. So we'll, we'll cover that requirement as well this evening. The need for the project is driven by two primary factors. One is a change in the surface water quality standards in Kansas, and I'll discuss a little bit of what that means. And then the second is really the fact that portions of the treatment plant that exist today have been in service for more than 50 years. And those elements of the treatment plant are no longer efficient or reliable in providing treatment for wastewater here in Emporia. Under the Clean Water Act, the state of Kansas is required to establish surface water quality standards for all waters of the state throughout the entire state. And the EPA approves those surface water quality standards. And that, that step in the process has been done. The next step in the process is that the state is required to identify and report to EPA what water, what waters in the state are impaired. And by impairment, they mean what, what waters in the state can't meet or don't meet the surface water quality standards that have been established. Here in Emporia, the primary concern is nutrients, and those nutrients consist of species of both nitrogen and phosphorus. So nitrogen and phosphorus are a regulatory priority, both at a national level and at a local level. From a national level, the concern is a growing dead zone in the Mississippi Delta and in the Gulf of Mexico. And everyone who discharges wastewater in the Mississippi River Basin is a contributor to that condition. And so from a national perspective, one of EPA's priorities is to reduce the discharge of nutrients into the Mississippi River Basin that will improve that situation. But at a local level, it's a priority because nitrogen and phosphorus both contribute to algal blooms in the waters of the state. And you may have seen some of these or read about some of these blooms in the paper or seen this on the news, but Milford Reservoir and Cheney Reservoir are just a couple of examples where they've experienced algal blooms because of nutrients in the environment. And those algal blooms contribute to a condition that, that, that gives rise to the formation of algal toxins. And those toxins have a detrimental impact on the aquatic life in those streams and rivers and lakes. And they also have a detrimental impact on human health, especially for communities that use those waters for drinking water supply. And so those two primary factors, the change in regulation and the age and condition of the treatment plant, really drive the need for this project. And if we, if we look at that just a little bit further, the treatment plant as it exists today, the treatment processes that are in place are not capable of meeting the new nutrient reduction standards. And so those factors are the primary drivers for the project. The alternatives considered for the project, the, the design team, construction team, and city staff, over the last 11 months or so, have identified, conceptualized, and reviewed numerous alternatives for reconfiguring the plant, rehabilitating the plant, or reconstructing the plant. And those alternatives even looked at abandoning the plant at its current site and, and moving the plant to a completely different site and building a new treatment plant. After reviewing and evaluating all of those alternatives, the alternative that was identified as having the highest benefit at the lowest cost and providing the best value for the city of Emporia was an alternative that we called Alternative 3A. That, that alternative is represented on this, on this chart here. And since you've seen it before, I'll, I'll turn to the public and explain to the audience what, what these are. In the, at the existing treatment plant, flow starts at the influent pump station in Headworth. This facility will be completely rebuilt, new pumps, new piping, new valves, and new electrical gear. This is, this is one of the older parts of the treatment plant, and parts are no longer available for some of the, some of the equipment that's there. After that is done, we'll abandon the existing grit removal process and rebuild that process here. That, that will allow us to eliminate the intermediate pump station and allow us to eliminate the practice of double pumping through the plant, which in the long run is more efficient and will save, will save operation and maintenance costs. The, the existing biological treatment basins will be modified to allow them to biologically reduce both nitrogen and phosphorus. From that point, the existing clarifiers will be reused, but will replace the mechanisms in those clarifiers. From, from that point, treated and clarified water goes to a disinfection process. That process is no longer reliable and parts are becoming scarce. So we'll reuse the existing infrastructure, but replace all of the equipment in that process. And then finally, the effluent pump station needs a complete refurbishment of the electrical gear. So that, that will be covered under this process. So that describes the liquid treatment process that, that will occur at the treatment plant. Solids that are produced at the, at the treatment plant, we will abandon the practice of anaerobic digestion and replace that by reconfiguring one of the anaerobic digesters for aerobic digestion and building a new aerobic digester. And then the final step is de-watering or removing water from those solids so it can be transported and ultimately disposed of. For the most part, we'll use the existing de-watering process as is. And that is kind of a broad overview of what the project will look like. For, from a project financing standpoint, the team evaluated a number of options, and they included both a conventional bond financing and financing the project through the state's revolving loan fund. The revolving loan fund is a, a program offered by the state which subsidizes interest rates for loans that are used to build water and wastewater infrastructure. And, and under that program, the project can be financed at a much lower interest rate than, than the alternative, which would be a conventional bond financing. That financing strategy would save about $5 million over the life of the loan in, in financing costs. So the team is recommending the, the SRF loan process or the financing mechanism. Finally, the anticipated project schedule. You've already conducted the first public meeting. This is the second compulsory public meeting or public hearing. From this point forward, I think everything is in place to approve and close the SRF loan. We anticipate getting through final contract negotiation and approval either here in January or early February, and a notice to proceed in late January or early February. And that will allow us to reach substantial completion by March of 2019, which will give us six to eight months to commission the plant and bring the plant into compliance ahead of what we anticipate the regulatory compliance date to be, which is the first quarter of 2020. So that, that is a high-level review of the project, and I think at this point, you should open for public comment.
Good deal. All right. At this point in time, we will open. Thanks for public comment. We are now in a public hearing to discuss the wastewater treatment plant upgrades and the application for SRF funding. Are there any comments from the public? Great explanation apparently, with no comments from the public or questions. So seeing another action, one last call. We'll now close with public hearing.
Thank you.
I'd like to make one final note, just as an update. Hey, this is too fast. We actually hope to lock in that 1.94 interest rate before the end of this year. And so we have like one or two items, and our legal representative is working on one of those, so.
Great.
We're confident we're going to get that locked in.
Cool. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a public hearing to amend the 2016 budget.
This is a typical process that we have at the end of the year. There are six funds that we don't have appropriate budget authority to spend the dollars, so we have published in the paper what those funds are, and now we have a public hearing to amend those budgets. The six budgets is the library, and it is basically, we've changed policy where we've only given the library in the past what the appropriation amount was when the budget was approved, and any excess funds, we kept in the library fund. We've changed our practice and is now going to be giving the library all the money that we receive. So that's being increased due to additional funds coming in over the past couple of years. The industrial development sales tax fund is being increased due to the expenditures that we did on Warren Way. And again, the fund had ample funds in there to pay for that already. The bond and interest and water utility funds, both of those are being increased due to the bonds that we sold. They flow through the fund in order to increase the asset side or the liability side. The sewer fund is being increased a million dollars because we transferred a million out of the sewer fund into the wastewater treatment project. Again, ample funds in there. And then multi-year, we started the year with a higher balance than what we anticipated when we adopted the 16 budget. So we're just increasing that to accommodate the additional projects with the funds that are being done.
All right. And once again, we will open a public hearing on the amendment of the 2016 city budget. Are there any comments or questions on the 2016 city budget amendments? Detailed brilliant explanations. No more comments? Close public hearing. Do we have an ordinance number?
Yes, ordinance 16-49.
Move we adopt ordinance 16-49, amending our 2016 budget.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 16-49, amending the 2016 city budget. Are there any further questions or comments? Jan, anything else you want to tell us?
Nope. You'll have to sign documents on this, once you approve it.
All of us, right?
Yes, all of you.
Sweet.
And this has no effect on the middle levy?
No, no. None whatsoever. All those funds have ample funds to cover the additional expenses.
Very good. All right, seeing nothing else, we'll vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All pose same sign. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. All right. Next up is approval of the election ordinance.
Mayor and Commissioners, as we discussed at study session, Kansas House Bill 2104 mandated changes in the election dates for officers of local government from the first Tuesday in April to the first Tuesday following the first Monday in November to mirror the larger election times. As part of that, the city is required to pass an ordinance extending the terms of currently serving officers until January of 2018, when the newly affected, newly affected, if I can copy, it would be helpful, newly elected officials will take office at that time. Similarly, we will have some other elected officials whose terms will be expiring, would have been expiring in April 2019, so we would need to extend those out to January as well. Are there any questions?
What happens if we don't want to extend our terms out?
Well, it is actually mandated.
Just checking.
It's called being drafted.
Yes, number 1650?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 1650?
I move that we adopt ordinance 1650.
Second.
It's moving second to adopt ordinance 1650 pertaining to the governing body transitioning to November elections.
Should Danny and Stephen I abstain, so we have a clear vote on this?
Make it easy.
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments? Seeing none? Let's get her done. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All pose same sign. Motion passes five to zero. All right, just added six months to your term. Or sentence. That's what your guy said.
It's closer to eight, and it hits us too.
That's true. All right.
I think it added to everybody, actually.
Yeah. Cool. Well, hey, we're at the end of the meeting, but we do have a boy scout here with us as we do often there, and so always like to invite you up to introduce yourself real quick and see if you have any words of wisdom to help us out with our process.
Let us know which mayor badge you're working on as well.
Hello, my name is Nicholas, and I am working on my communications mayor badge. I am here at the city commission meeting to, because I have to attend this.
Totally.
Now, I'd just like to announce that Troop 157 is having a pancake feed on February 11th located at First Christian Church, and those are available for purchase now.
Excellent. Any questions for Nicholas? So tickets for the pancake feed are available here tonight if we'd like to purchase those?
Yes.
Excellent. Good to know. Great communication skills.
That's sales.
Very, very good. All right. Well, Nick, Troop 157, you said?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much for attending our meeting, and we appreciate you taking some time to share your, your evening with us.
Thank you.
All right. Any other issues to come before the commission?
Mayor, Commissioner. Report from the city manager's office, and on behalf of Mr. McInerney, really, you know, we're just getting through the holidays. Obviously, things continue to move along on various projects in the city, no major hiccups. Our tentative agenda for the next study session next Wednesday, open meetings and records update, our city attorney will be providing that. We have an update regarding city facilities update. We do have some issues that will impact the operations of this building that we'll cover, plus some other, other things, and we wanted to bring you up to date on that so you're not just totally blindsided by that when it happens. So those are the two things we wanted to cover, and we ask for your indulgence if you want to meet that day, if you have some other ideas about how we can handle that. We'd like to handle it before your joint meeting with the county on the 11th. So we're open.
All right. Any other issues? Seeing none? Is there a motion to close our final action meeting of the year?
Aye.
Do we, what do you guys feel? Do we want to meet next Wednesday, or do we want to add a study session to our January 4th meeting? I'll be out of town next Wednesday, so I won't be here.
You want to go the 11th?
We'll have to go.
The fourth then?
Yeah, we'll only have three members present. The fourth, we could meet after our study, or after our action session.
If you want to meet, whatever's convenient to you, either after or before, however you want to do it.
I can do that. 1:30 meeting, then 2:30.
It doesn't look like it's going to be anything lengthy.
Probably, probably half hour, forty minute, five minutes, I would think, unless there are a lot more questions, we intend.
What does our fourth agenda look like? Pretty light.
Pretty light right now.
I would say just do after.
Yeah, add to that.
Okay, we'll, we'll publish it for 2:30. I think we talked to Christine about the publication. So we'll have the regular meeting at 1:30 and publish for 2:30, thereabouts.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Perfect. All right. Is there a motion to close our final action meeting of the year?
I second.
Moving second to close the meeting. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Close. Have a good one.